Good evening. I'd like to call to order Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Special Meeting Tuesday, October 15, 2024 regarding the 2024 Street Tax Levy Referendum Town Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Clerk Soul, please call the roll.
President Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Koss.
Here.
Trustee Mateo.
Here.
Trustee Marshazga.
Here.
Manager Francis.
Here.
Director Zavala.
Here.
Also President Clerk Soul.
We have a quorum for this evening's Town Hall Special Meeting, and I will note that this is being recorded and will be, is being broadcast live on our YouTube and Facebook page, and will be rebroadcast on our cable station and our other social media outlets. So with that, this is a Town Hall regarding the 2024 Street Tax Levy Referendum. I will turn it over to Manager Francis to give us an overview of what the Street Tax Levy Referendum's all about.
Thank you. So I'll start with giving a little bit of history of where we were and where we currently are, and why this question is on the ballot. So, over the past 20 years, the village has issued debt twice. So, once in 2004 and another time in 2014. And so, in 2004, it was approved by residents by nearly 85%. In 2014, it was approved by 77% of residents that were voting in that election. And so each time that the village issue its debt, there are costs associated with issuing debt. And so each time, it was approximately a half million dollars. And so that half million dollars is ultimately levied as part of your annual property tax bill, in addition to repayment of the 2.5 million. Next slide. This illustrates the program that was done with the 2014 bond referendum and the improvements that were done within the village between 2015 and 2016. Next slide. So why are we not doing a street bond referendum versus this new referendum question? And so it's different this year, and there's a reason why. The new question is, shall the extension limitation under the property tax extension limitation law for the Village of Riverside, Cook County, be increased from the lesser of 5% of, or the percentage increase in the Consumer Price Index over the prior levy year to 9.3% per year for 2024? Now, we recognize that this wording is not, is very much imperfect. Unfortunately, it's statutorily required. So what does this mean? Essentially, what the board is looking to do is levy the dollars that were previously collected for bonds, instead of paying for bonds and all the interest that goes with that, is keeping your tax levy level, but utilizing those funds directly, it being directly paid to go to streets, instead of paying for debt service. This new approach provides a dedicated funding source, so then the village wouldn't have to come to taxpayers every 10 years asking to issue bonds, which means issuing debts, which is a cost of a half million. And the half million continues to incrementally increase because interest rates don't go down. Also, with that particular debt issuance, you're getting less for your dollar, right? Because you're issuing the debt and then repaying it over 10 years, and then issuing the 2.5 million again. So 2.5 million in 2004 versus today's dollars are very different, in having that understanding. This particular referendum question is property tax neutral if approved. The property taxes that were dedicated for the street bonds, which are the loan payments essentially, will now go to street improvements and maintenance. You go to the next slide. So this is an illustration of Riverside residents' property tax dollars, and what portion goes to the Village of Riverside and the Parks and Recreation Department, because that's all part of the village, versus other taxing bodies. So we represent just shy of 16% of your total property tax bill. So when we talk about that 9.3 for just this one year, that is only on 16% of your property tax bill. So just having that understanding of what we are talking about. Next slide. So future street expenses. On an annual basis, the village updates a 10-year capital improvement plan. And so the most recent one that was done for this upcoming 10 years is 7.4 million in street improvements. Current funding sources are insufficient, because all we have is our non-home real sales tax, which is based on sales that are derived through Riverside Sales, and motor fuel tax, which is allocated on a per capita basis by the State of Illinois villages. And so we have only approximately $630,000 if nothing is done. So if the referendum isn't approved, we have insufficient resources to accomplish our 10-year plan. And I also wanted to note that these improvements listed above in that 7.4 million do not include any traffic safety improvements. This is strictly sidewalks, curbs, things of that sort, streets. It doesn't include any type of traffic calming improvements, any improvements for cyclists, nothing. It's just simply resurfacing the streets, curbs, and any of the adjacent sidewalks where we're doing different programs. Next slide, please. Based on our 10-year plan that I referenced, these are the streets that we have slated to be resurfaced. And so if we don't have sufficient funding resources, this table looks very different. Already, our current program for streets that were to be done in 2004, due to insufficient resources in 2004, those have now been delayed to 2026. So just recognizing that we're already now two years behind in our program. And so if insufficient resources continue, that program continues to get pushed out. And it's based on priorities of condition of the streets. It is also based on infrastructure that needs to be addressed under the streets, because our goal is to make sure that we are impacting residents the least amount of time. So when we are looking at resurfacing your streets, we are looking at everything that is under the streets. Similar to your home, you know, typically the most expensive items is everything that you don't see. And so it is our sewers insufficiently, insufficient capacity underneath the streets. Then we're looking to address that when we're resurfacing. That has a different funding source. If we're, your water mains have insufficient capacity, we address those as well. And so really, the goal is, when we're touching a street, we are touching it once and not coming back to it until it needs to be resurfaced. Next slide. If the referendum is approved in November, then the projections look very different. We are able to continue with our 10-year capital plan as outlined, and there could be some additional resources freed up to be able to move up potentially some of our street program. All of this is based on projections, based on what we're projecting out for construction, inflation, and future years. And so while there is no guarantee, we try to take a very prudent approach in how we're spending your tax dollars. Next slide. This is an illustration of what the Village of Riverside has been able to accomplish over the past 20 years with resurfacing, in the different respective years. And I apologize because unfortunately, it's really hard to see the color coding. If you'd like, I can certainly provide you a printout of this, but it illustrates the different items that have been addressed in certain areas. So if you're familiar with, an example would be, the first division was a comprehensive resurfacing. We did sewer separation and addressed certain items as it relates to water mains. And that's what we always do when we're approaching these different programs at a holistic approach. Okay, next slide. So, some of the questions that I have received, or board members have received, are, what are the street funds used for? And so there's a number of things that we can utilize the street funds for. More specifically, it's for street resurfacing, curbs, rebuilding of streets. It also can be used for maintenance, repair, improvement, and resurfacing of the pavement, bike lanes, pedestrian islands, sidewalk, traffic calming mechanisms, and improvements of the like, traffic safety improvements, traffic signals, and other various improvements, also including pavement rejuvenation, crack sealing, et cetera. And so that's really important to understand where those street dollars all go to. If the referendum is approved, how can residents be reassured that those resources will go to streets? Well, it's, it's multiple things that the board is doing. One piece is, on Thursday evening, there is an ordinance before the village board stating that if this referendum is successful, that those funds, specific to that tax levy amount, will be earmarked for streets. So that's one piece. The second piece will be, if it is approved, then staff would initiate a policy update for our fund balance policy. And what does all this mean? Well, from a financial perspective, we would be asking that those funds are earmarked, that policy is then approved by the village board. And so what does, what does that mean? Right? And so the additional pieces, when funding, when rating agencies are looking at the village, we are currently a triple A+, which is just a step below a triple A, which is, means we have sound financial policies. Not many communities have that level of bond rating. And so it's important that we maintain solid financial policies to ensure that we maintain our bond rating. And so as part of those different pieces, we would enact these different policies and ordinance to ensure that what you are voting for is in fact what those resources are going towards. Next slide. So this is a postcard that was sent out. Many of you probably see it on your chairs. I am, I'm told that many have not received it yet, so expect it in the mail very soon. For those that require a translation, we do have our FAQs on our village website, also in Spanish. And then also, I am the primary point of contact for any residents that have questions, for items that I might not have covered, or items that have just come up, that you're uncertain about. Once again, I want to reiterate that from our perspective, staff's perspective, we can only educate. So you cannot call me and ask me how you should vote, because that is not my role or responsibility. It's just to provide you the information, and for you, as a Riverside resident, to make that decision on how you choose to vote, given the information before you.
Thank you, Jessica. Just to follow up on a couple of things. All of this information's available on our website. The maps, everything else, go to our website, you'll find a link to the Street Tax Levy Referendum. So if you need to follow up, see it again, please do that. Also, our social media includes a lot of this information. I want to just follow up and emphasize a few points that Jessica mentioned. The wording on the referendum, you know, the 9.3% sounds scary, and it startled us as elected officials when we saw that. But reason that that number is what it is, is that every taxing body, school districts, mosquito abatement districts, villages, raise their tax levy every year by the Consumer Price Index, or 5%, whichever is less. So the wording of it allows us to continue to adjust for inflation up to 5%, and then the increment is 4.3%. So what you've been paying in property tax for the bonds, the street bonds, has been 4.3%, not 9.3%. Second, I wanted to point out that, what does that mean? You know, this is a question I've gotten a lot. What does that mean? How much money per year are we talking about? Because these percentages don't mean anything to me. Well, on a half a million dollar home, the, the typical property tax to the street bond levy was about $100, $116 a year. And that would stay the same if this referendum's approved. And then I did want to clarify the obvious question. Yes, if the street referendum fails, our traditional street program will be reduced by a quarter to a third, or, I mean, this obviously, but needs to be stated, we could cut other services to transfer money to streets, or we could raise other fees and taxes to transfer money to the streets. You know, the pie's only so big. If the pie gets smaller with the failure of the referendum, something has to be cut, or something has to be increased in terms of revenue. And then finally, just to be clear, yes vote on the referendum will maintain the level of taxing that you've been paid. It will not increase your property taxes, but rather will just maintain that level of tax that you've been paying, with 100% going to streets rather than 80% going to streets, and another 20% going to, or to interest and issuance costs. No vote will mean that our street funding will be reduced. So trustees, any other, before we open it up to the, to the residents, any other additions? Anything else anybody wanted to add? Very good. I would ask you to come to the mic since we're broadcasting, and introduce yourself, and then comment and ask your questions. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Mike Maher. I've lived in Riverside 25 years. I voted yes on two of those prior bond proposals. So I'm not against it. I'd like to ask two, I think, verifying questions. One, I think you've, you may have already answered. I want to make sure I understand. First, I want to say, my wife tells me I can sound a little chippy, and so it's not my intention. I've known Doug Pollak for a long time. We are lucky to have his expertise in public administration. He has a great reputation. I think he's a nice guy. Aberdeen, I've known as well. The rest of you, I don't know. I'm sorry. But I thank you for your time and effort. My questions, I think, are two simple questions. Number one, if the referendum goes through, then I thought I heard you say, Jessica, there's going to be an ordinance passed, voted on Thursday, that would require the money be used for street surfacing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
In that case, I respectfully request, suggest that you notify the people in Riverside that if the referendum passes, that the money will be specifically used for that purpose. That was one of my questions that came. The other question I have is, if the referendum passes, is this permanent? I think this goes to the question that Doug was asked by, in his interview with the Landmark, on the accountability question. Having voted for it twice in the past, I get it. It sounds like what we're talking about is swapping one funding bucket for another funding bucket, saving the interest, and applying it to streets. I think that's my understanding of it.
Mm-hmm.
But the advantage that we had in the past, perhaps is the price of democracy, is we got an opportunity to vote on it every 10 years, and pay the price for it in interest. And so my question is, if the referendum passes, is it now permanent?
It is permanent in the sense that it would require the village board to vote to approve to abate the tax if we suddenly said we don't need it or don't want it anymore.
Yeah, my experience is not, I'm taking the under on that.
But, yeah, more or less, permanent's a pretty, you know, permanent word. But yes, it's a levy that would be, it's a, it's a tax that would be levied every year until, unless a village board took action otherwise.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir?
My name is Mike Gustafson. I live at 10 East Burlington Street. And Doug, Jessica, thanks, and the rest of the board for taking this question. From what I understand, from, from start to finish, when you redo the streets and the curbs and whatever, also the sewers come out. And from, I wasn't able to see exactly what was on the map, what streets have been done. But if that's the case, if Burlington has been done up to Long Common, there's a real issue. And I don't know if this is something that you've guys seen or heard of lately with the drought, but we had some real sewer gas up in that area, around that whole area there. So either the sewers aren't getting done properly, or maybe that's something that goes on beyond the scope of the village, that goes into more the county. Because it seems like if it's going to be...
So we did, we did get a number of calls. Unfortunately, when we go through lengthy periods of time without rain and the sewers dry out, there is that smell. And it's just not unique to Riverside. There are other surrounding communities that have also been affected with that. And we do notify Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. It's something that we're certainly aware of, but it's not to say that there's any, anything defective with the sewers. It's just that unfortunately, it dries up because we haven't had any rain. And so the smell lingers.
In July, it was like that.
So I suppose it's kind of like your pea trap on a drain being empty.
Correct, yeah.
Other questions?
Good evening, Greg Nessinger. Is it Thursday already? That's the first question. The second one is, I've heard tale of replacement of lead pipes for the water supplies, and that's going to be federal government pushing that, right? So would, no, well...
Finish your question, we'll answer it.
Is the federal government pushing it? And would they help pay for the repair to the streets and stuff like that?
So streets are separate from water and sewer-related expenses. So when you get your water bill, those monies go directly into the water and sewer fund, and they can only be expended on water and sewer fund improvements. Now, the village is eligible to receive loans, and actually, on this upcoming board agenda, we are receiving a $4 million zero-interest loan for lead service lines from the state. And so we're going through that process, but that loan is repaid out of the water and sewer fund. Yes, we have to replace lead service lines, and we are definitely taking a concerted effort. Yes, there is the different mandates at the, the federal level to get that done. There's very limited grant funding for the Village of Riverside, because based on how they classify need, unfortunately, the Village of Riverside does not meet that particular level for disadvantaged communities. However, we've been fortunate to at least get a 0% interest loan, so that's really helpful. As we're replacing the lead service line, so I'm glad you bought this up, sir, we, our goal was to resurface roads. So what we do is, we come in, redo the lead service line, let everything settle. Once it's settled, so basically, the following year, we would come back and we'd resurface that road. However, if the referendum is not approved, we will have to adjust that plan. It won't, that, that's not to say the street won't be resurfaced. It won't be resurfaced on the timeline that we had had planned. So it will get pushed out. So residents will have to see the, those different cuts within the street that are patches. And so that'll just be one of the items that we'll have to live with until we accumulate enough resources to resurface those streets, because we'll have a short timeframe to spend that $4 million, based on the rules that are outlined for this funding program. So...
But to clarify, the mandate to replace the lead service lines is coming from the State of Illinois, correct?
It's both federal and...
The federal's now doing it too?
Yeah.
I know the State of Illinois did it first.
There, there's different federal funding that is being freed up specifically based on these different mandates.
Thank you. To answer your question, anyone else? Got plenty of time?
Hi, my name is Cindy Gania, and I'm a very long-term Riverside resident of over 40 years. And I wonder if you could refresh my memory. I know when we first moved into our house on Fairbank, we had the roads done, and there was actually a property tax assessment that we had to pay to fund some of it. Did those other referendums eliminate that?
So what you probably had was, I'm trying to mental blink on the name, but essentially...
Special service area.
You got it. There were special service areas. And Riverside, so this is going back almost 40 years, had it for every street. And so every, instead of doing bonds, which is a little bit more of an efficient mechanism, they did a special service area for every street in Riverside. And so each street, those that benefited from that resurfacing, which there can be an argument that everyone benefits because they're utilizing those streets, but were assessed that special tax. We haven't done the special service areas since, I would like to say, almost prior to 2004. I want to say it stopped in the 80s, early 90s, but please don't hold me to that. Because we do get calls every so often when individuals are trying to conduct closings, and whether or not there's still a special service levy on those particular properties.
So the 2004 and 14 referendums, they, they eliminated that special assessment, then?
We have not done special assessments, yes.
Okay. And then I just have another question. When you say there's a, going to be a 9.3% increase, what is that increase over?
So that, first of all, the 4.3 is what we're currently paying. So really, we're talking about that 5%.
Okay. And why is it going to 9.3 this year?
Because based on the levy language, it goes back to, once again, it's clunky language. But essentially, to capture what you're currently paying for the bonds, we have to increase our levy. And so that's that 4.3%. The five, the remaining 5% is essentially CPI, new EAV, lost in collections. So not everyone will see that full dollar amount. And I'm trying to not get too far into the weeds.
And then another question, and this is just, I don't really understand this, but when our property tax assessments go up, the budgets that you prepare are based on your needs, not on the assessed value. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
So our, it's based on CPI. Our, unfortunately, our property tax levy, and we were actually discussing this earlier, our needs are far outpacing what our property tax levy is increasing by CPI. Because CPI, the last couple of years, have been well over 5%. And then in addition to that, we have other competing costs, like public safety costs that have gone up significantly in addition to pension costs, which are far outpacing that CPI number.
So, and I want to take this opportunity to kind of explain a little bit about how the property tax works. Some of you, or all of you, most of you may know, but basically, each municipality levies, it was frozen in the 90s. In the 90s, the state passed a law that said, whatever your property tax levy is, starting at the top, whatever your levy is, it's frozen, except for the cost of living each year and new growth. And, or except you have a referendum that the voters approve. So that pie is set. That's, you know, it's a top-down system. Each, each taxing body sets their levy, then the assessor figures out who pays what portion of that. And the village has no input into that. Because I'll have people tell me, Doug, my taxes went up 10% this year. What'd you guys do? We didn't do anything other than that CPI. What happens is, if yours went up 10%, someone else's went down 10%, or five people's went down 2%. And what we've seen a lot is commercial properties struggle. That's why it's so important to have, have a strong commercial base, property tax base, because when those go down, that has a big impact on residential, what you end up paying. So I hope that's helpful. So, I hope that's helpful.
Yes, thanks for your patience with me.
Sure. Did I explain that right?
You did.
Thank you.
And that's for home rule, non-home rule.
Non-home rule, right, which we are.
Yes.
Right, right. Other questions? Anything? Welcome to have any, any other questions? So, trustees, anything anybody would like to add?
I'd make a comment. So, President Pollock and I attended a community meeting last week, and somebody asked, well, what's the opposition to this? And I haven't personally seen any or heard any, but it really drove home the fact, the reason we're doing these postcards, the reason we're doing the town hall, the reason we have social media posts about this, is because that question sounds awful, and we need to educate. As you said, if somebody didn't know the background here, they got to the ballot, we probably all say no. And I, I can't speak for my fellow trustees, but when I first saw that question, I wrote an email saying, this is terrible. We have to have something simple. So, it's not so much opposition, it's education. So, I'm glad you guys came out tonight. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And Mike Maher hit the nail on the head in terms of the pro and con, and is it worth $50,000 a year, $500,000 every 10 years, $1 million every 20 years? 20% of your taxes you're paying on this, is it worth it to, to have to come back every 10 years for a new vote? Personally, as a resident, I say it's not, I don't think, well, let me just, yeah, as a resident, I would say it's not worth it, because this is a small town. If, if we mismanage your tax dollars, we're going to hear about it. We're going to get voted out of office, someone's going to run, or we'll have to take action to fix it. So, I think the accountability question, although academically a valid question, I think in a small town like Riverside, the accountability is there, no matter what. That's, that's my opinion of it.
Yes, agree.
Well, plus, we're, it's not like we're ever going to be like, the streets are done. We never get to touch them again, right? There's no, there's no chance that, you know, the streets take wear and tear, and so, they're going to need to be resurfaced after a certain period of time. So, there's no...
No end.
...to the need for street repair.
Yeah, it's a good point. I mean, it's like, I've, I've quoted in the landmark saying this, it's like borrowing money to pay your comm ed bill. You know, you can't do that every month. Pretty soon, you know, you're, you're falling behind, further and further behind every time. And this is a, this is not a capital expense in the sense of building a building. I have a building, now I don't have to, to spend 20 million, or 2 billion a year, whatever it costs. Streets aren't going away. So, I think the, the financially prudent and responsible thing to do is to always have reliable revenue for costs that aren't going away. The only time you, ideally, in a perfect world, the only time you want to borrow money is for a one-time expense, like buying your house, or building a building, whatever. So, anyway, yeah.
I have one other item. Clerk Sol, if you can put back up the table that showed the revenues that are being collected currently for, there you go. So, just as an education point, motor fuel tax is based on per capita, based on the income that the state is receiving for fuel. So, as individuals start to move to electric vehicles, that revenue item will start to decrease. So, that funding source that is currently there, and that's why I put projections are based on the current economic conditions, because I don't know, we don't know what that will look like in the future. And so, that 250 in five years could more, look more like 100,000. It's an unknown. And so, from that perspective, also, that funding mechanism becomes important from the referendum perspective, because we may not have the same motor fuel tax level that we have today. And unfortunately, we don't have those projections, and I believe that the state of Illinois is working on trying to get some of that information as they're collecting that data, but we're still in the early phases of that. Thank you.
Sure.
Mike Gustafson again. Would that deck be available online, or be able to download that, what you have here?
The PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah, the PowerPoint.
Certainly, we can load it.
Yeah.
On the website.
Yep, thanks.
I'd just say, please share the information with all of your friends and neighbors who were not in attendance tonight, because I think Manager Francis did a wonderful job explaining the ins and outs and ups and downs of this whole thing quite clearly. Thank you.
Why do I have to help out? I can get with my wife right now. This is what we're doing.
And here's why. But yes, this will be on Riverside TV as well. And just go to our website. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, thoughts? Trustees, anything else? Well, thank you all for being here. Really appreciate you coming out on this kind of cold rainy night. And please educate yourself and get out and vote, no matter what. Get out there and vote, November 5th. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None? We are adjourned. Thank you all.